At this time, I would like to ask Willie Ray Deal to the Demetri Invaders of Central Rock Church Cross on Rocky Road to forth to your prayer, please.
Would you bow on this, Frank? Gracious God, our Father, this evening we come before your mighty throne of grace and mercy. Ever so thankful that you are our God. We recognize and realize that you're God all by yourself, that you're from everlasting to everlasting. We thank you tonight, dear Father, for your grace and mercy that you've been so kind to us. We don't know where we would be without you. We thank you for the greatest gift you've given to us, and that is your son, Jesus Christ. Thank you for your son, who is our Lord and our Savior. Tonight, we ask that you be with us as we gather this evening to talk about things that are important to the community and the city of Sherwood. We ask that you be with the mayor and this council, dear Father, that they're able to make wise decisions for all who live in this community. Dear Father, we ask that you be with them, that they consider you in all things, that whatever is said and done, that in the end result, that you'll receive all the praise, honor, and glory. And Father, we thank you that you've been so good to us. We realize that things could be worse than they are. We realize we could be in a hospital tonight, but we're thankful for all that you've done for us. We realize, Father, that we didn't have to wake up on this morning. So thankful, Father, that we don't take these things for granted. Father, once again, we ask that you give this council wisdom in all that they say and do, that they make the right decisions for this community and city. And Father, we give you this prayer now. We send it to you on the wings of faith, hope, and love, praying that it reaches the eternal shore of that celestial city that's called heaven. This we give thanks in the light of the master's marvelous, mysterious name of your blessed son, Jesus, who is the Christ. Let us all say, "Amen."
Thank you, please.
I wish we were to give the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here, Harmon.
Here.
Lily.
Here.
McManus.
Here.
Aye. Here. Keppler.
Here.
Sanders.
Here.
William. Here. Approval of minutes for the regular meeting on August 24th, 2015, is transcribed. Move for adoption. McManus.
Aye.
William.
Aye.
Harmon.
Aye.
Sanders.
Aye.
Aye. Lily.
Aye.
Keppler.
Aye.
Bruce.
Aye.
August 2015, final. Any questions coming? Committees and all commissions, advertising and promotion commission. We did meet, and the minutes should be in the packet, and if anyone has any questions. If not, we'll meet as scheduled next month, first Wednesday of the month. Thank you. Civil Service Commission, Parks and Recreation Committee.
We did not meet, but we do already have our meeting scheduled for the next Monday of the month, but I think on the agenda for that is by five o'clock at the Harmon Rec Center in the Magnolia Room.
Personally, how's the meeting?
We did not meet. Marine is on the mend, we'll be able to announce, he is feeling a lot better. So Thursday, number of the fifth, four thirty, Harmon Rec Center, we will meet.
Thank you. Fine commission?
An ordinance regarding the appeal of the Turbo Fighting Commission's denial of a rezoning of 617 West Hill Avenue.
At this time, I'm leading the property owner, Mike Russell, would like to come forth and make some comments regarding.
Thank you. My name is Mike Russell, and I am the co-owner of the property on 617 West Hill. Unfortunately, I was not able to be here for the last meeting. However, I do have the minutes from that meeting, and it seems to me that the opposition to this plan building project that we are proposing to put on that property was kind of misleading in a way that it looks like the signatures that were collected and the opposition that was here for that was for a multi-family apartment complex. That is not what we're building. And I wanted to make that particularly clear, that I do have a copy of the plan to show to anybody who would like to see it. It's my understanding that our plan was contingent upon, the R2 zoning was contingent upon, we had to stick to that plan, and that's exactly what we planned to do. They are nine single-family, 1,000-square-foot home with covered parking, solar panels. There is a greenhouse, there is a community garden, and it's a gated property with a brick and iron gate. It's a beautiful property, the homes are beautiful, and it would do nothing but increase the value of the properties that are in the area and in the surrounding areas. I myself live in that neighborhood. I live within a half a mile of it, just right down the road on Hollywood Road. I would not build anything myself there that would destroy my personal property value. And I'd be glad to answer any questions or any opposition that people may have.
The recount, for any questions of the council?
Why R2 if it's residential? Didn't it just be R1? I don't...
Density. What's the density issue?
Some rotten, zero lot line. Any more questions or comments from the council?
I've been driving down that road, and I would say that some construction would be an improvement on that property.
Yes, ma'am, we've actually started, I know at one time it must have been a trailer facility at one point, there were still three trailers that were on that property when we took it over. Since our last meeting, the process of having those removed is already started. As a matter of fact, the first trailer is already on the road and ready for it to be towed off, and Dana is the first one. The other ones have already been prepped and ready and are being pulled, and that property is being completely cleared and cleaned.
That's necessary.
Very much so, yes.
Now, this is not a conditional zoning, so I'm curious of your comment that the zoning was conditional on you have to stick to your plan, because typically, when we zone a property, once the zoning is acquired, you can construct what you want to construct, you may start construction, then run out of money halfway through, and go bankrupt, and never finish, and somebody else comes in and builds something different that's in compliance with an R2 zoning, or any number of things can happen, and as long as it's in compliance with R2 zoning, then that's it. But if this is not a conditional zoning, I don't know how it is that we have to stick with this plan.
Site plans? Excuse me, site plans are required, when you reach out to any city over or fund any multi-family zoning. They do have to follow this site plan. If they don't follow it, then it has to go back to Planning Commission and then to City Council for approval if they make a change to the site plan.
If they follow, that they have to follow this site plan, and if they don't follow the site plan and make any changes, they have to come back to where?
To the Planning Commission, and then it would come back to City Council. The site plan has to be, or the site plan commission has to be.
How long did you own this property?
We purchased the property approximately six months ago.
And did you do anything to improve it in that time?
Well, yeah, like I was saying...
Besides the trailers?
Yeah, well, that's kind of the initial step of the improvement was, you know, we bought that, we bought this property specifically to put this plan together, to do exactly what we're doing. And, you know, if it was to go to the point where we weren't able to do what we wanted to do, we would probably sell the property. But we have started the process without waiting, I mean, we really, there was no need to leave the property the way it was, and that's why we started the process of the cleanup already, regardless of where we were in this process, because we wanted to clean it up. We want that property, it's a nice piece of property, it really is, and I think in the end, even if we didn't, we weren't able to go forward with our plan, that we're only going to increase the value of the property by cleaning it anyway, so that's what we shared with you.
There is a question I have, and that is the access in and out, there's only one way in and one way out, is that correct?
That's correct, and it'll be gated all the way around, and that would be, obviously, the layout of the way in is not ideal for the width, it's not a very wide property. It doesn't leave us with a lot of options. So the road that comes in has like a cul-de-sac turn at the back, and that allows us, you know, cars in and out access. Also allows for guest parking and things of that nature, if we're surrounded by that community garden.
If this is going to be a gated community, what will be the situation with trash pickup?
Trash pickup, right now, that would be something we would have to negotiate with the city. We would hope that we could get them to come in and do a normal trash pickup. However, if they weren't able to, they would have to provide for the residents of the property to move their trash in to the, for them.
Does the cul-de-sac have the proper turn radius so that they fire trucks, all that kind of stuff, and as you talked about, that it's narrow, so?
Yeah, it is a little more narrow than what we would like, but it's definitely wider than, you know, even some streets that are out there now. I mean, there's plenty of room for it, which turn around, and that's all that's a question.
What about fire access? Fire department access, thank you.
Yeah, it's plenty big for that, there's plenty of access, and there is, on the plan itself, you can see where the fire hydrants are, there's a fire hydrant located on the property.
Do you plan to build in phases, or plan on, you know, doing all of this in a short period of time?
Yeah, the plan was to try to do it in a short period of time, and to have it go up as quick as we possibly could, within reason, I mean, we don't want to cut corners. These properties we're building are very nice, they're going to be very nice properties, they're going to have stained concrete floors, so those little things are going to take time to put together, the solar, things like that, it's going to take time for it to get it all up, so it's going to take a couple months longer than what we wanted to initially, when we put our plan together to build, for the type of building we're doing, but it's all, it's all planned to go up all the time.
Like brick or framing?
They're wood frame.
Wood frame?
Wood frame homes, yes.
Wood frame homes, some of them with only 10-foot clearance between the homes?
Yeah, 10 feet.
10 feet.
Well, some of them, I used to see that.
10 feet between some of them, 15 feet between the others.
Right, but they are...
We might need to build a fire station across the street, because one of the kids has fire, they're all in case fire.
How far patio homes apart are they not, about the same distance?
Yeah.
I would say that's not unusual. Are the patio homes that we currently have in Sherwood, though, I thought that they are, they're not wood, they're brick, and they're made in a mason's hand.
They're brick and mason.
I don't know, I can't think of any that are...
Any more comments?
No, I do have a concern about the width of the street and the radius of the cul-de-sac, because we have had issues, and we do have issues, in other locations with garbage pickup and the radius of turning and how hard it is, with patio homes in other areas where we're having, where we have these issues. So I am a little concerned about that. I know that we see the radius here, and I know that once it's built, and they desire a garbage pickup, if they do, then our garbage trucks have got to be able to negotiate those roads without vehicles and cars in the way. I know you've got, I see where you've got places for cars to park, but then they have to make that radius to swing themselves back out, so it can be a real issue for a garbage truck. We don't have small garbage trucks.
And it's my understanding, when we put this plan together, that Marlar should see that Jesus Christ's force took in all of these things into account.
And that'll be double checked, I mean, that Ellen and that's fine, we'll make sure that it's...
Yeah, those are our concerns as well, I mean, you share concerns we have when we put this plan together. Absolutely.
So really, I mean, you know, looking at the width of the road, and Ellen, you may have to correct me, but I think our minimum for city standards is 27 feet, and we're looking at 24. Is that, am I accurate?
You're correct.
Hey, I've got one right so far, so, I mean, we're not, we're not that much smaller, it would really be, you know, the radius in the circle, it would be possibly problematic.
Looks like it's a 40-foot radius, if I'm reading.
I'd like to ask our city engineer, just for informational purposes, I can't see on this radius, this cul-de-sac, is this common in the cul-de-sac doors, is this smaller than usual? It's typically 50-foot radius, and this is a 40-foot.
We saw the only houses on one side, in fact, there's only buildings, it sounds like you have a road with the, as I saw it, the cane, I want the cane on one side.
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
Okay, so all the cane road in this road.
We use as much of that property as we can.
And all your construction is going to be on the west side of the road?
Correct. Except for at the very end, when you hit the back of the corner, the house, the greenhouse that's on that right side, and then the entire left part of the property, the back part of the property is a community garden area.
Can we ask the fire chief?
Just let, let me back, let me back to the fire.
If, I mean, is that something that we should be concerned about in terms of the width between these homes and the fact that they're all wood?
Well, the width is the distance between them, that's kind of normal, and a lot of the new subdivisions, they're all 10-foot between houses, you can't even get a boat or something in the backyard, and that's not a problem. Now, what is going on, my one concern I have?
Can you come up here? Dr. Perry?
And I'd also like to hear from Brian about the turnaround for the garbage, whether it would become mandatory. That's one, I'm going to tell you, this is the street. Yeah.
And one of the concerns I would have would be...
Could get closer to my phone, please, Chief.
Is the radius turn, or fire ladder trucks, or whatever, and I have not seen these plans, but what is on the opposite side of the road, how much room do we have? What's over here? Okay, is there a fence?
Yeah, there'd be a fence.
So how far off the road?
This right here is 10 feet.
Okay, so 10 feet from the road to a fence on the...
Well, I have 8 foot, so...
One of the problems is that I can see, if we had to ladder, it's 18 feet wide to set it down, so it's going to have to be in the middle of the road, to be able to turn maybe both directions, you know, my concern is walking on the opposite side of the road from the house, but it looks like it's got a gridiron there. The only thing would be whether the turning radius is in there or not, and we wouldn't be trying to turn around with that, actually, that's really not going to be...
Did you stop before I told that?
We would pull in and then actually, we just...
Back out.
So, front of people, garbage truck problem, unless you have, and I would make sure you have nobody parked in the front.
Right, yeah, it's not designed for road parks, and it's just a turn, and, you know, we have the planters going around it to keep it, and the idea was to keep people from turning.
And what's the setback from the house, front of the house?
Front of the house, it's a bad... We're 16 in the back, and all of these houses have 15 feet, so it's only every other house, by the way, that is 10 feet, just to be perfectly clear. As you look at the plan, every other house has 15 feet, the first one has 10, and then it goes to 15, 10, and then 15.
So they're up center on the lot, kind of.
Right.
Brian, do you have any feedback or some of the radius of the...
With a 40-foot radius, it's very difficult for a garbage truck, and a standard garbage truck, that one's kind of very difficult, turned around, and you've got to consider moving those free trucks, we can't, I believe, that's going to be really, really hard on that cul-de-sac. My suggestion is, if y'all went through with this, would be, probably, it'd be better to cut it up, especially if they're private road as well.
The issue there is, if you can't turn a, one of our garbage trucks around, probably can't turn a dumpster truck around, so, but then...
Unless they could find a contractor that had a smaller one, but at least you wouldn't be turning the free trucks around in there.
Your concern is not that it can't turn around, it's just that it's a vacuuming it out, you can't turn a road.
I'm not sure if you can. I would have to lay out one and just see how high the turn radius would get, but I know they had to make a couple steps, you know, a normal way to cul-de-sac.
Because there's only nine homes, is that correct?
Correct.
It's not uncommon for them to be put up on the street.
Bringing it out to West Hill wouldn't be an option, that would be too many containers to place no more fringes than he's got at West Hill just there at the turn sign. You would have to go down the road with eight, nine containers of them.
It also appears on your plan here that they do have the gate, the proposed gate and your key pad, if I'm looking at that right?
That's correct.
What would be, the issue there would be, that if those two are posts and gates across that, you're not going to be able to squeeze any kind of emergency vehicle, garbage truck, or anything between those posts, because that street's already narrow.
Right. Marlar has assured us that that will be adjusted for whatever it needs to be, you know, for any vehicles that are required to get into this property will be there. So that was just the initial design that was put there, that was the design of showing this is how you're going to get in with the key pad. If we need to move or adjust that idea, that's really just the way you put the plan together to show that it's a gated area.
That was a question I had, but I'm there.
Right.
I just have a question, I'd ask our city attorney, is there any way, is it legal to revise this and then bring it back, because the radius is kind of a problem, that's a disclaimer right there. We already have too many areas that we're having to back out of, it's just not safe.
It looks like it's used on the line, I mean, so he's border to border.
Well, unless you, unless you push it down, well, you could push it down and reduce the size of your community garden and the greenhouse, but if you had to remove the greenhouse and make that, that would definitely give you the distance right there.
It would do it too.
If you push it back into the greenhouse area. Mayor, I would think procedurally that this is an appeal, it was at this planning commission for a certain set of plans that are here, so I don't think, if the council wished to ask for a redesign, I would say that we need to, you would need to vote to send it back to planning and let him submit new plans, rather than to make changes here, because I think this is an appeal of just what was presented to the planning commission, and in fairness to the other people that are here, I think that should be the process.
And I think we should hear the people that are here also, and that time to hear them as well.
I think that we agree with that. You want to be on standby in case there's questions for your call. The first person in front is Mr. Emerson, Tommy Emerson, and it'll be Tracy Mason and then Mark Webber.
My name is Tommy Emerson, I live at 1001 West Hill, and lived there since 1995. Father, on August 11th of this year, we went before the city planning commission and gave them our reasoning for strongly opposing this rezoning, and they agreed with us. They felt it was not advantageous for that community, and that there were enough residents in that area that opposed it, so they denied the request for rezoning. And I'd like to briefly review that reasoning with our city leaders, so that they sort of understand the community down in West Hill. First of all, I think we have more, at least our fair share, if not more, of multi-family housing in that area. We have 40-plus buildings for multi-families. In those 40-plus buildings, there's residences for 111 families. If we assume that those are families, and the national average of 2.2 children per family, we've got over 400 people consolidated in a very, very small area. That means that we have 222 vehicles approximately, given that most families today are two-car families. That also means we have 222 children in that area, very, very small compressed area. Child safety, if you're familiar with West Hill, you'll know there's very few sidewalks down West Hill, surrounding areas. We also do not have a city park or playground in that area. So where do our kids play? Even if there's a sidewalk here and there, it's kind of hard to play football on three-foot wide sidewalks. It's hard to play baseball, it's hard to ride your bicycle, so where do they play? They play on West Hill. Many, many paths, cars going up and down West Hill, dodge kids, or kids are dogging the cars. It's also a school bus route. If you're out there during school pickup or drop-off, if you start at Mark Street and try to get to 107, you may have a delay of five or 10 minutes because of bus loading and unloading. Also, we have additional traffic coming in from Windsor Valley. Those people come through West Hill out of Windsor Valley, come down to East Wesley, down to Mark Street, Mark Street up to West Hill, West Hill down here. That's access to Walgreens, that's access to Sonic, the donut shop, Walmart Market, and if they don't turn off at those places, if they go to the red light, they go there to turn left and go down to Walmart Supercenter, or they go there to access East Hill rather than making left turns on the 107. And as most of you know, that's pretty risky at times. Also, if you're, if you noted West Hill in the last few years, there's been a great improvement in that area. We've had two very, very nice single-family homes built in that area, we've had a number of old homes that have been remodeled, some of them completely gutted and remodeled, so there is some improvement, some pride being taken in that area, and we want that to continue. And when we went around and asked the people if they were in favor of multi-family property more in that area, the answer was no. I have, I have 98 people who signed petitions to not rezone that area. Now, 98 doesn't sound like a lot, but I think that's a fair representation of that area. And we ask, what we're asking from our city leaders is that they consider the desires of the people who live in that area to not rezone for more multi-family property. And, you know, we're asking you to not overturn the city planning commission's decision. They agreed with us, and we would like to leave it that way, and ask that you please do not overturn. I'll answer any questions if I can.
It's just an opportunity for you to make your comments, okay? It's time for the next one, though, thanks for coming up. Tracy Mason?
Good evening. I'm Tracy Mason, I live at 8214 Mark Avenue. I am one of the older homes that Mr. Emerson speaks of. My home is almost 50 years old. I do not have a sidewalk in front, I do not have a paved driveway, but it's my home, and I'm very, very proud of it. I bought it myself on my future salary. I chose to live in Sherwood for exactly that, I wanted a neighborhood, I wanted someone that when I was gone would look out for my property, I wanted someone that would keep an eye, and that's what we have. I don't have a sidewalk in front of my home, but I live someplace where I know everyone in my surrounding area. When people go on vacation, we know. When people go on vacation, we know. We are asking that you respect our way of life, if you will, that we have fought, paid our taxes, paid our money to have. We are the established neighbors there, and we are just that, we are neighbors. And it's something that you don't have very often. When you're a single female, you want to feel someplace other, you want to know that there's someone on either side of you that looks out, and that's what we have. And by adding additional properties into a very confined area, there are some risks, as we all know. We are a neighborhood of dead-end streets. You know, wherever you're going, you're eventually going to have to stop, or you're going to have to get out on 107, or you're going to have to go into North Fluro. Now, as a teacher, I have been taught repeatedly over the past few years, that what you have to say means nothing without data. So, as a final thought, in my neighborhood, which runs from 107 over Wesley, over to Chiliwood, there are currently eight homes for sale, one duplex under construction, two completely empty duplexes, one parcel of land that's being developed for approximately 15 homes. And on rent.com today, in Sherwood, there are 70 apartments for rent. Our neighborhood is saturated. We ask that you respect our way of life, and understand that we are in this for the long haul, because we are property owners, we are people who are building up our property values, and we ask you to respect that. Thank you.
Mark Whibley.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I live on Mark Avenue. No homeowner in Sherwood wants more rental units. Here's 28.